Alright everybody, ready to get started? We're gonna start with the pledge.
Acton Town Council Meeting July 6th at Acton Park. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, well, glad to see everybody turned up. Uh, we've got some stuff we wanna go over. So, who wants to go first? I've not seen the representative from Dollar General get here. Anybody from Dollar General or NNN development? No, okay. Well, whoever that is here, uh, we did extend the invitation, uh, to Dollar General and their developer to be here to, uh, give some questions about the project. And, uh, this is the point here, uh, we can hear the initial, I think, communications from the town on how they felt about the president, so, um, that's a press. Um, that said, we've got a couple things we can kinda go over with what we didn't know, uh, so far. So, the project was submitted to the county, uh, for approval last week. Uh, we've asked the county for a copy of the site plan. We were hoping for too early, and they provided to us after they made the recommended revisions. Uh, we've asked the developer to come today, I said that, uh, and they have sent an email address. Uh, that's where a lot of the feedback should be directed, which is, uh, through the developer. Uh, that's actndg@nnretaildevelopment.com. That's also on our website, and there's a couple handouts, I think there's probably only one left. Uh, so you can grab it from somebody. Again, that email address is on the website, and it's on our Facebook page, so you can contact them then. Uh, the comments we have received are overwhelmingly in opposition to the project citing many reasons, not the least of which is, uh, concerns for local businesses run by our local residents. All these comments will be provided to the county and the developer by Wednesday if we can put in the way of Dollar General's intent to obtain a liquor license. It appears the community of Acton has already twice the number of liquor licenses per capita than the county average. So... You can, uh, look at that as a...
I want to give quick announcements for everybody that maybe doesn't know us, 'cause our names are here. This is Jackie Air. She's our correspondent secretary. And that's Pam Wiltar.
Oh yeah.
Joy Keener.
Joy.
Jeremiah. And Tom. They're all on the town council as well.
And one of our members is home with Carl.
She's under quarantine. We're hoping the video stream, this live stream, is just... At any rate, this is what we, the developer did provide as preliminary drawings. They are posted on our website. We do understand that the changes have been made to them, and that is what was submitted last week. We, normally, when we email regional planning and ask for copies of the site plan, but I didn't brought them to you tonight, they send them right away. And so, I was stunned when we got an email back saying it's too early, and regional planning wants to make all their comments first, and then we'll look at the next one. I, I, that doesn't work for me. And, uh, so, uh, we have, we will be asking for assistance from Supervisor Barber's office. We have two people from Supervisor Barber's office on the phone with us today to answer questions that you might have. So, Pam Scott, Donna Trumair, who's a field deputy here for Lancaster, and Jeremiah has Anish Araya, who is Supervisor Barber's head deputy for planning. So, they're, they're, they're right next to her, so anything we tell her, whatever, we'll go to Supervisor Barber. So, there's problems that we're not, we don't have a copy of the site plan to bring to you tonight. I apologize for that. The other problem is that we have been told by the developer, the developer who's building the building is not going to be, um, submitting for the liquor license. That will be done by Dollar General itself. And this person, this developer will own the building, and Dollar General leased the building from them. So, we have grappled with this situation before. And Acton has far more liquor licenses per person than any other part of the county. And, and we've brought this to the county's attention, and, um, we can do the same here. However, we need to get the message, not only to the developer, but also to Dollar General, that if they try to come here, and if they try to get a liquor license, my sense is this community would not support that. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
So, we need to communicate that very quickly to both Supervisor Barber's office, as well as, um, the developer, and hopefully, Developer General directly. We don't quite know how to reach Developer General yet, because the way they bifurcated this process, I'm a little bit concerned about it. But, there has only been one person who has offered, I wouldn't say it was a comment and support, it was just like, "Oh, just let them build." That was it. It wasn't like, "Let them build." But, we overwhelmingly got a lot of responses that are against it. I've compiled all of them. We'll be submitting them to the county on Wednesday, and the developer. If you have comments you wanna add to that, please email the town council. It's on the footer of the handouts, at actontowncouncil.org. I'll add your comments to the 25 pages of existing comments, and send them to the developer and the county as well.
So, uh, we've got some other stuff on the, on the docket. Do you, if you have specific questions, uh, then come forward, 'cause we've got the phone here with the county, so we'll either answer, or we can pass it on to the county. And identify yourself and where you live.
Okay, we can ask questions now?
Yeah, you're welcome to, yeah.
Okay, so, you said, uh...
Come forward a little bit.
Come forward, 'cause Donna needs to hear.
Okay, so, Dollar, Dollar, Dollar General, did it buy that lot? Is it the building, the builder, his building? Who's the builder?
Investor.
It's NNN, it's, what is it?
It's almost the same. So, okay, I thought it was one of the same. So, we don't fight them as well? Nope, we fight all of them, yeah. Okay. But unfortunately, this is what's called a ministerial development. What that means is, it's almost rubber-stained. As long as it meets all of the requirements for the trail, and the signage, and everything else. So... It's a, it's a tough road to help, but because they're going to be applying for liquor license, that would be required conditional use permit, that would be what we call a discretionary. For, they have a lot, they give a lot more latitude to what the community, the commuters input on it. So, if Dollar General was to pull out because they don't feel the support, they haven't been supported, the builders could put something else there, and they're... It's zone commercial, so, I mean, they could put, you know, like any other commercial business. Hopefully, it would be a business that wouldn't drive out our other businesses, obviously. And it would work for this community, and not the commuters that come down Soladad and Crown Valley, so... We're gonna make that clear to the county. I just, I, I don't, my experience is that you're getting more traction when you have a discretionary, like, liquor license, you know.
Any other questions?
Does Anish or Donna wanna add to that? Oh, why don't we teach you questions to the audience? You gotta come forward, buddy.
He is my buddy, that's right.
There was a recent article in the LA Times about Dollar General and... And about the safety, they are, they are raw quite a bit, because they handle small amounts of money, and they have a lot of cash. People spend cash at those type of stores. And Dollar General and the others have not been willing to put guards or security to protect their employees. Now, my concern is, they're being sent over to, will this bring, um, additional criminal activity into our town with the Dollar General, especially when you've got a clear runway to the freeway?
Absolutely, you bet.
Could you, do you mind sending that in as a comment, or did you already?
Uh, I will, I will.
Okay. No, I appreciate that, because that's an important statement. There's YouTube videos about it, they're posting them. Really, they've been on CNN, they, you know, it's documented. Could you send those links out to town, because we have to, we try to use them. So, when everybody is relaxed, let's do it here for everybody. Exactly. Thank you, Donna.
Jackie, she has some responses, I don't know how.
Okay, can you just go ahead and talk to him a minute?
Okay, I'll do my best. Alright, I guess we got a short sentence, so I have to really... Okay, so, regional planning had filled the man last week, and there is not an official submitted application today?
No, what?
For the Dollar...
Okay, there was.
It came in on the, uh, the report, uh, this morning. So, it came on a Metacup today. Okay, so, that must've happened. So, basically, agreeing, Jackie, he said ministerial is not a whole lot.
But what about safety?
It meets the requirements, but he said that for the CUP for a liquor license, that everybody's voice would have a certificate.
What about safety concerns?
Question is, safety concerns, how's that? Yeah, we don't have a substation, we don't have... That's right, the hood city, the police here.
Both the police departments out there in Palmdale.
For now.
Yeah.
I asked, when is it gonna go to Public Works to look at things like traffic signal requirements, traffic impacts? There was no response to that part, although it normally goes over to Public Works. Just like, and we'll talk about it later, we've asked for them to do, for the truck storage and the car lot, a site line of sight, and safety right onto Soladad, because I don't care if it's by right or ministerial development, if it creates a traffic hazard, that has to be committed, or not built. I don't know.
Alright, while you have the guy on the phone with good questions, I have a...
Sir, you have to stand up, so she can hear you, so that he can hear you.
Trust me, I'm usually loud enough, I don't need this to hear. But I'm standing.
I don't know you.
Okay, so the questions are, my name's Tom Smith, I live up Crown Valley. It sounds like this ministerial, you can't stop somebody from building a building that's a commercial on a commercial property. I get that, but when they're building a building, they still have traffic studies, environmental impacts, and others. The builder's gotta do that. Dollar General, or whatever store or business goes in this building later...
...commercial uses along the lap. However, if it causes traffic impacts, it would warrant a traffic scene. Then they have to go through all the environmental studies, and get a position of use permit. So, that's why on the truck storage, on the car lot, on the Dollar General, we're trying to push it to Public Works to get that assessment done. Because the county will not require it otherwise. So, we're trying to, and they don't, they never have. We keep pushing them to do it. The zoning code changed a few years back, and these are the first big commercial projects that have hit us since the zoning code change. Now, we're trying to actively push the county through the process that was adopted with the zone change. So, what you're saying is, what we're trying to push on. And, our first response back today from Tita was, "Not particularly encouraging, but we're going to keep pushing." And address, I didn't know about the robbery safety issue, but certainly the traffic we're pushing hard on, because they don't do environmental studies from ministerial. Unless we have this hook, which we got put in our zoning code just a few years ago. A lot of work, we finally got that in there, so, that's the goal.
Uh, Tim Jacobson, I live up on Ninth Street. Is there gonna be consideration for the market?
Sir, come forward, 'cause she can't hear.
With the market, and when they get their deliveries, they have no room to put their big trucks, so they park on Smith and on Crown Valley, which is a huge safety issue, with people trying to cross the street, driving in only one lane. So, what consideration's gonna be done when this developer builds it? Can they get a big rig in there, if Dollar General goes there to unload, rather than sitting on Smith?
Can you, can you send that as a comment for circulation? Because that's not something that we raise. That's why we're here. Here we'll be saying so. Thank you very much.
Are you gentlemen from the Dollar General pledgeions?
Yeah.
This is Dave Church, and we're Triple Net, we help develop it. And we, uh, now we're proposing the Dollar General here in Acton. That's, that's who we developed.
No, 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 no!
No, 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 Bill, what?
Because we've got Donna, well, she is our supervisor barber. Kind of research department, internal department, they aligns us based on all the scores they have, where they think they'll be successful, and where they don't. They basically enlist us to say, okay, you know, Acton, Palmdale, Lancaster, wherever, these are where you want to go get the scores. And that's when we step in, and we gotta go, you know, put our developer hat on, and try to, try to get them their share. We don't, we don't have anything to do with why, or how, or what, nothing, I'll say. About seventy percent of what we do, what I'll call smaller towns, Silverton, Acton, you know, we're all... More often than not, one store, or, you know, communities anywhere from, from any town, we then try to go find a piece of property, and see if we can find a place to build in that town.
Okay, hold on, that's not the way this is gonna be run. It is a focus meeting.
Gotta read the rules of decorum.
This is not the first time that we've...
Some town council meeting.
There are communities that are welcome with open arms, and it's great, and there are other communities...
We don't have a police presence.
We've got this same kind of resistance, and again, I wish... We don't have anything to do with why they wanna be, uh, but it is my job to try to build a store. So, that's where, you know, we've come to many communities like this, where, you know, we know that there's gonna be, you know, a lot of dissent towards us, and my job is to, to do the best I can that if we can, you know, you try to... To coexist with the community as best we can, you know, whether it's a western, ranch-style community. We've done a lot of mountain towns, uh, where, you know, there's certain characteristics of their towns that we try to do the best we can, and we're involved, as we have, with the other development and community.
You guys can first, I said, we're live, but we're not, we're not, we're gonna run down. Nobody's just gonna be around. We're live, we're live, we're on this shoot, we're on this, we're on this, we're on this. How about that?
Uh, we, we're on, yeah, I think, I'm going in, I'm going in, I'm going in, I'm going in. First on the tenth street, we're on, we're on, we're on. Now that I don't lose my... Seven to eight thousand people. We can certainly make, you know, they may follow things like this very closely, and we can certainly, you know, we do that already, but we can certainly make, uh, make them aware of the feedback and input that we're getting from them.
Are they here?
They're not here.
Uh, and we're happy to provide that. I think that's part of what the county does, is make sure that anything that we're turning into them, they provide you a copy. We're happy to provide you a copy, and we just turned it in, so the typical, they go expect that we'll probably have multiple rounds for them, and at what point...
In four weeks, you'll get this round. Where's round number?
Gilbert Morgan, out here in Sierra. I just, a couple things I need to tell the light, and, uh, for, for you, you... We planted our feet here, and we wanna stay here. This is a stand-your-ground kind of place, and we don't wanna stop and rock, in our neighborhood. And it appears to be what we're looking at, is stopping.
So, what's gonna be done? I have a question, but how can I possibly, may I do that? I'm sorry, it was your boy, Bill, huh?
Well, keep that in mind. I wanted to make that spur of the talk, you know? And, uh, coming from downtown LA, where I grew up, I'm here, I'm, I don't wanna...
If not, please better by stopping, Rob. Is it, um, is it really getting to her question about the true frame? People are gonna come into that, it's more notorious. Al, I can speak to that. I do know they run crime indexes, uh, and depending on the level of the index, what happens is, is what, when we get involved in that, is when we know that, um, they have to provide additional resources to test the store. I know that we can ask and get what kind of crime level index that we're dealing with here, and if they foresee any top. I can tell you, all the stores, we own them, you know, for, at least periods of times, we always typically have one or two stores that we own. Uh, and so, we're dealing with our fun stuff of, you know, plumbing leak, or roof leak, or paint, but we also deal with the presenting incidents of the store, whether, uh, and...
The concern is more that it's not that it's existing crime.
No, it's new crimes, right?
The president's town looks like...
You're bringing it in with, we have the fourteen freeway, we have Crown Valley, Soladad. I worked in LA, I worked security, my family did, uh, police, our own kids.
So, there's a lot of concerns, really. And also, the other thing I wanna say is, I've been reading up on their products. Their products are very inferior, there's a lot of toxins, toxins that are literally in a lot of the products, and the products, and the kids' toys. I mean, there's a big YouTube video all over, like, if you wanna educate yourselves, you buy all this stuff. And that's it, and this is posted, and it's really good information.
Hi. And, yeah, majority events are gonna boycott it, you know?
Hi, I'm Maria, I'm up on Desert Road, and I would just like to maybe give these gentlemen a visual. Hands, raise your hand, do you want them here?
No!
I mean, as simple as that, all the logistics, all the legal, everything else. Bottom line, we don't want the Dollar Store here, and it won't be supported by us.
It's gonna put three of our local stores out of business. No, we're not gonna support it.
And to support what they've been saying about the crime, according to CNN, in Dayton, Ohio, in...
We want them. We are only fifteen minutes away from Palmdale, you can go and get whatever you want. But if you want to build your building here in Acton, you need to build something that is good for everyone that is in here, not for the people that Dollar Store is targeting, that they're going to bring in. Because we are the residents, and we will embrace you with open arms if you bring something that will benefit the town, rather than put three of our stores out of this market. We are gonna have a discount store by the service station. So, build your building, and bring in something we don't have, but also that is good for us.
Do you stay factory?
Hold on, where are we going now?
I, I have a quick question for you. Do you have, uh, can you provide, probably not right now, but as soon as possible, the kind of, uh, traffic you're expecting in terms of customers a day, or, or, or hours? That's really important to our community. We definitely don't see that we got for the Palmdale Santa Clarita. Because here's seven thousand people spread over a hundred square miles. So, if you're gonna be getting a hundred people a day, they're not gonna be Acton, they're gonna be others. And that means we need to factor that into the traffic study, because it won't be local traffic. It will not be pass-by. It'll be a hundred percent not pass-by. And that's what we need to feed the public works.
We can, we can certainly look into that, we can provide traffic data, and generally, kind of, typically, to the cows, when they see their traffic. I can tell you, they certainly are targeting their junior income as opposed to transit, traffic. But we can dive into that, just to ask and get an idea of, you know, how much of their revenue they think they're gonna save for different, you know...
Well, all we need to know is about how many, how much business they need to figure out. How many customers a day? A hundred or five? Just five, I'd like to do a...
Keith Harris, I'm twenty-three-year resident, I live up, uh, Bette River. What I like to know, gentlemen, is that you're not the ones that are making the decision to put a store in. You're the developer. You're just facilitating Dollar General, is my understanding. Is that correct? If that's the case, who at Dollar General do we need to get in touch with to convey our concerns about this? Because you'll go back, you'll give them the information, the feedback you had on this meeting. But let's be honest, they're a large retail establishment. They don't really care about what is being said here unless one thing happens, unless you can communicate to them that they won't generate revenue. That's bottom line. If they can't generate revenue here, they don't wanna be here. So, we have to convince Dollar General, they can't generate revenue. That's what this is all about. Gentlemen, it's not anything against you. You're just trying to do your job, and your job, as a developer, is going out and doing what Dollar General asks. And I, I totally understand that. I own my own business, I know how those things, okay? And you can see I'm a little older, get a little weary on the edges, so I've been around a little. So, who do we contact?
You know, we've shared, um, emails that we receive, and, you know, the website, the links to the town, and there's some comments, uh, so we've shared all that with them, and then, I mean, what we can...
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get a point of contact, absolutely.
That's a wonderful, we want a point of contact.
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure if they want that going back to corporate, or if they want it to be local. My guess is, this would probably be something to go back to corporate, to find out who, who they want to, to, to have at home.
That's okay.
I, I wanna hit the traffic, 'cause I came out of Los Angeles to come here, but I, I resonate.
It's not as traffic signals that are prohibited, it's the development that creates the need for the traffic.
So, you're gonna run into obstacles, you don't want those things here. Um, so, really, really think about the safety of the traffic, and I want our town, so, I don't want to... That's a part of our town. I live further up than Canyon, so, you know, I'm not there, and, 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 and. And if one little accident on any of our arteries, you see the traffic, that then, if there's an accident right there, it would flood our town, and coming home, shout someone to the traffic count, what comes by here, and how much people are gonna come off the freeway, and then, that, it's gonna be... to be a nightmare. You're not going to hear a sound, so it's a lot of things that I see. So fair warning.
Okay, we're moving on.
I'm Patty Akad, I'm 30-year resident. I'm here in Acton. And I know that you guys are in Colorado, is that right?
No, south.
Okay. But when you came here, thank you for coming. I appreciate that you came. But did you go into the little town of Acton? Have you seen our 100-year-old church? Have you seen everything that's Western and the quietness? This is what concerns me, is that the Dollar General will change the whole, complice the whole, I mean, the whole setup of this town. There is a Dollar General, less than 15 minutes away in Little Rock. And that little town, just another little country town, that's an eyesore. That store is an absolute eyesore in Little Rock. So if you want to put the same thing here, and they have some in Antelope Valley, they have some in Santa Clarita Valley.
They're working on another project in the Antelope Valley, if I remember correctly.
...is where they're going to put stores. Have they come here and talked to people and asked them, "Do you want a Dollar General in your, in your town?" Do you know?
The only thing is, they have a lot of stores. I think you're up to 15, 16 stores. And they think all the analytics.
So they're just looking at distance, like, Santa Clarita, Palmdale, there's a middle area, let's put one here. You know, they're not thinking, they don't ask the people if they want it. They just put it because there's nothing there.
I don't think they have one in Santa Clarita, is it?
No, that's still my, my dollar area.
Well, I don't know what research they did to say, wow, this will be a great list.
You know, they spent a lot of money, a lot of research on the demographic, and that's how they turn it.
Where they want all the community, they don't have markets. Well, it's a fine, they act exactly where they go. That's why there's one in Pear Blossom and all these other towns in Little Rock. Because they don't have any other many.
So, on that same kind of topic, you've mentioned that you can go to all these county councils and whatnot, and some of the great schools, have they ever changed their minds when you get a lot of pushback like this?
I can tell you, the ones that we've done, you know, we've had some that we haven't been successful. Typically, it's because of something with the city, you know, and if it gets too difficult, then it does turn around. But I can tell you, more often than not, we've been involved in a couple specifically, off the top of my head, that I remember that is very, very similar. And again, they probably look at the success of the store after it's built. And those stores have been very successful. So I think in their mind, they feel like, you know, at least the majority of the people, or enough of the people in the community did support the store, was happy. We typically don't have this kind of sentiment once it's been built, you know? And I don't know if it's just because there's nothing at that point that people can do, but I know that we've, you know, they're embraced. But there's one that took about six or seven years in Joshua Tree. And by the numbers of the store, the people are supporting that store very, very strong. So that's, you know.
But I don't, I don't know that you've got a Dollar General sitting with a half a block on each side of it with a grocery market. I've gone to four of the other ones that I was aware of, Lake LA, whatever, Little Rock, and whatever. They're all more isolated, and there's nothing around them, basically. Our town is totally different. We've got our two stores.
Again, we view ourselves more of a general merchandiser. We're not a grocery store. So we think we're very competitive grocery stores, not we're not a business. We think that we're going to offer things that oftentimes people have to leave the community to go buy, now you won't have to. And that's really what it's about. It's convenience. And saving money. It's just that simple. And it's...
Hi, I'm Tammy Nissar, 43, resident, here at Acton. So do you guys build buildings for anybody else other than Dollar General?
A few, but we're, we're by a little.
So you work for Dollar General, building their buildings?
I'm not a Dollar General employee, if that's what you mean. But we spend most of our time working from the half of Dollar General.
Okay, so what happens when we don't support this, like Fillmore didn't support the Dollar General, and we now have an empty store sitting there? Because this town's not going to support a Dollar General. So what is the next step beyond that? We have now this ugly, icy building, and just like Fillmore does, and there's a building in that store of Fillmore. It's been empty for a long time.
I'm not familiar with Fillmore. I can tell you that's of the hundreds of stores that have been built here. There have been a few that have closed, but, you know, California's been very good to Dollar General so far. So I know that, you know, their, their belief is they want to continue to build stores, and our job is trying to build those, and, you know, we...
But it's true, they usually go in the lower-income areas. The ones that I see out in Lake LA, there's one over on, uh, Palma Boulevard.
I will tell you, it's, their bread and butter is a small town with limited services where they come in and... You know, again, I'm not involved in making the decision. I mean, I'm happy to get, we'll get in contact, and if, you know, by all means, you guys can educate them and send them whatever.
What for you, so that you could go back and tell them what this community really looks like? I mean, how much time have you spent here? Sorry, I'm not going to... Keep track of who's going next.
Oh my God, I'm going to lose my mind. I'm a 30-plus-year resident. Regarding the traffic studies, three of our four schools are going to be affected by this traffic.
Is that your question?
So that means we have to, for our children's sake.
The Acton Market out here. Because, yeah, you're right, maybe, I don't know what you guys often mean, first and all that, but you're taking away all of my, the common market, on the demo market that you guys sell. That's what keeps me afloat during this slow, this slow, it's like, if we could, Deb, if we could shut both our offices down, honestly, because it's not a clientele to support the three stores. Yeah, you're getting at some people that might know that they're going to be, and eventually, it will shut us down, because you get bigger pockets. And I, I could, my house up on, you know, for a global market, I mean, everything we own is in that store. So it would very much like hurt everybody. So you say, yes, that's my concern. Like, there is a lot that people do, detrimental to their community, you know, so it's not...
Dawn. So my question is, is you say that you picked that spot. Now, did you look and see that there's two other stores, and was that even considered? Because this is obviously a large, multi-million-dollar company that, you know, could go anywhere. Why choose to go next to our local store, Aaron? And that doesn't seem like a good choice that's beneficial to our community. That just seems like it's beneficial to your pocketbook.
Yeah, I'll tell you, it is very difficult to find property, because, you know, we have been involved since day one, and I think Dollar General's gone on, maybe close to 10 years since they first entered California. I know they've been looking at Acton for a long time. Again, we weren't involved in the other properties that they've looked at, but I know that it's, you know, it's the amount of commercial land that's large enough that, you know, you start to figure out, could that work?
Next to our store.
Has been difficult. And there isn't a lot of opportunity that we can find anywhere.
But there was other investors besides you guys, two years ago.
That I think have looked, yes.
That looked at this same block in downtown Acton. And they abandoned the project.
My name is Mike England. I lived here in Acton for 11 years. I moved out of Santa Clarita because the traffic was so horrendous. Now you're trying to bring in a company that's going to be impacting our little community, that's going to be bringing so much traffic in here. We're going to have congestion, we're going to have smog, and we're now getting the smoke from that fire, by the way, from Santa Clarita. Thank you. But what I'm trying to say is, this community will be impacted, and it's not going to be in a good way. We don't want it, and you can tell your people, they can take it, and you can know where to put it.
I just want to ask...
Dawn, you better come by me.
I just want to make a request that, I appreciate you gentlemen showing up, but I do hope you go back and explain to them that they should go back and review their numbers. We are not general demographics. This is an older retired town. I moved out here in 88.
Speak for yourself.
Okay, half of us, Jackie.
Yes. And, and our median wage out here in Acton, according to the United States government, is $90,000. So we're not a poor, poverty-stricken, younger town, which means that if you build that store, since we are, a lot of us are retired, look how many people show up on a Monday night, then we're going to be in front of that store protesting every day it's open, until they shut down, because no one can get in.
Just have a quick question, because you guys rock, don't you? When, would you please have a date when you will give the point of contact, and to whom will you give this point of contact? Will you be able to give us a point of contact tomorrow?
I'm not going to promise tomorrow, but I will tell you by the end of the week, you know, we can get back to you with someone. I don't know how they're going to do it, and I don't want to promise something that I can't deliver on, but I can tell you, we will be, we're easy to get ahold of, we're not easy to get ahold of, so we'll make sure that we get a point of contact.
But are things happening quickly? I mean, I think we have to go ring.
No, Jackie, come on, talk to us.
Well, I mean, it's going, the site plan was submitted, so it's in process.
Right.
No, no. We have, you know, sorts of reports and stuff out of our, so this is, and then, and then we'll give it to Jackie.
Oh, no, no, we'll post it on the website. And, no, we don't, everything, we're pushing everything.
Yeah, so we can all...
Everything, we push it out.
Here's the headline.
That's on Nashville, Bill, too. Now, hold on, hold on. Now, I'm a local builder. Now, what, how you guys taking away from me? I want to make money in my town I live in. So if I want to build this establishment for him, you're actually stealing from me. Now, again, I'm not for it or against it, but in this little town, you certainly should not be this negative to two gentlemen. I wrote down here, because I heard about the things that are being said on the live feed to these guys. Give them, don't kill the messenger here. These guys, you guys are already in my... But where would you have people over Ace Hardware? It wasn't. And that's because our local guy, you needed a hardware store. We went flying about, we went flying about for 15 years. I've lived here. You can't tell me no. I've been here. I've been here 40 years. And you say you have people that are on fixed income, or they're retired. Wouldn't you know, to buy something a little cheaper helped them? And don't you have a choice to go to this store or not? You have a choice. So they just don't go. I mean, that's fine. You don't have to go. Because I'm kind of ashamed of my fellow Actonites here for the way guys are treating these people. But anyway, I just, I mean, these poor guys, I can see in their face, they're standing chastised. They're really trying to be a bunch of... They are. I can't, I can't believe these guys are chastising them. I only wrote down here because I saw a live video. Yeah, you're right. I'm a local contractor. I built many arenas. I built many things. Arco wasn't protested like this. McDonald's wasn't protested like this. Jack in the Box wasn't protested like this. Please, explain to me why, because I don't understand why I would just stop. No, that's why I don't want to talk to them for time. I'm sorry, what, ma'am?
The county approved that. The step-toed community, shelves were dropped, and the thing went up.
And you know what, honestly, they're going to be able to build the same thing. They're going to be able to build. If they give the rights, they get the permits, they get everything built, and they pay for it, I don't see the guys really going to stop them. I'd say, I'd say, yeah, one for, yeah, like, you totally misread what I said, because you did listen. I said, I'm not for it or against it. Well, then why are you here? Because I've seen people treating these guys like garbage. Thank you, thank you. The irony is, is people yelling at these guys. I'm not yelling at them, actually. I'm speaking loud enough for your people to hear me. What's that? Is the first one, it's been about this. Yeah, a long time ago, yeah. You're right. And now, now you have a bit, you go on to the next store called Ace Hardware down there.
And then you're going to kick me out, kick him out. No way does that man just calm down.
Here in Acton, Patty.
Yes, I do thank these gentlemen for showing up.
I do, yes.
Thank you, absolutely. And I do know that, um, Dollar General, this next store in Acton, they're not Acton, Hollywood City, rural community that we are. And...
Well, no, I just wanted to read everything that he's saying, that we're browbeating these people. These people are representing Dollar General and the contractors that are going to be building. They're here on a fact-finding mission to find out what the community wants. Nobody's browbeating them, nobody's degrading them, nobody, as far as I can see, they've been, they're not going to be kind of used. They're answering their questions, so maybe the way a store is able to hear what the community wants is what the community has a point.
Hey, hi, I'm Susan. I live up on, we're bigger about four years. So it's here, it's a song, and it's hard being here. I love it. Um, I've seen it, read it, I don't know if it's 4 or 5, I don't know. And it was really quiet, the ball just slid in. We left because it was too overfilled. And I want to talk on something you said. Dollar General chose this place that was small, we gave it a few amenities. That's how we live here. That's why we live here. We can drive eight miles to go to Dollar General. On Palmdale, we can drive down the canyon country. Everything's easy access. We live here because there isn't a lot of those stores. There isn't a lot of that stuff. We don't want it. That's why I moved here. I love the fact that if I want something, I try and buy locally. My hair salon, I buy all the jewelry from there, because they're local artisans. I love coming to my Acton market. It's wonderful. I don't mind paying a little more for good products, and I don't mind driving 15 miles either way to get what's not here. That's why we moved here. That's why we live here.
Nobody doesn't want it.
No.
Oh, empty.
No store in, oh, we don't say, right? Grocery store is empty. Good luck to them, you know, but I come here because it is small, you know, it's worth it. But it did come with higher. We know Mike would see that kind of growth in this company, but it is, it is corporate America. We don't want corporate America. The private we have here is, who stole somebody's boat? Well, Brian is everywhere because there's, you know, yeah.
So they know they can come in, ride, and leave before anything, before any, uh, sheriff department can get you.
That's our biggest problem. So we should, yes.
Moving right along. Your name, please.
I'm April. Um, I am, uh, sort of as a counter, but I think to the gentleman who said that the majority of the community or longer than me, is required folks. Um, I can say that I'm somebody that moved here with my family in 22. Grew up here, came and called out here. Uh, you know, as a young adult, moved out, did my thing. My husband and I bought our house out here in downtown Acton, very close to the site, very close to, less than a quarter of a mile walking distance, uh, to the coast site. And I can say that what I want is for my sons, uh, who are two and four, is, and it's what we, our, our, what I love about it here is that we walk to this park. I like that we're so central to the park, to the markets. And I have our horses. We have, I feel like we have all those worlds. Um, and it's safe, we can walk around town safely. So it's not just going to be your retired, you know, your retired, uh, folks and your, your people who are of the older generations, it's going to be the younger families who want that same blend for their kid, don't they? Speaking for I, not the, I'm saying that's I, that I have you, a lot of younger families, um, like us, are total agreement.
Are there any Dollar Trees without alcohol sales? Dollar General? So last stores that have tried to come in could not get a CUP to sell alcohol. I'll let Jeremiah articulate why, because he did a very good job of that before you guys came in. But is that something that is going to be a have to in order for this business to come in?
No, um, we're not, you know, I, I know they prefer it. I would probably say ninety-two stores are beer in line, I believe it is. But it's not a, it's not a have to. So it's, it's, prefer it, but if they can't get it, it's not a, you know.
Because it's not a deal killer from their standpoint. Because it's not likely that they'll get it based on previous businesses that have tried to come in. And like I said, Jeremiah did a very good job of explaining why. And so don't plan on alcohol sales as part of their arrival.
All right, uh, I think we have.
Um, well, I, 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 I'm the correspondent secretary, so I am tasked with writing the letters. And I, I would appreciate it if any of you have comments or the things you said tonight, you'd like to share them through our website, and we will deliver them to the developer, these gentlemen here. And thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
And we will also provide them to the county.
And the point of contact that would you guys get?
Yes, and we'll push that out. But I think the letter that I'll be writing, and I'll send around to the town council for their comments and changes, will be one of opposition and vehement opposition to any liquor license CUP. So if you could please share that. I know you said it's not a deal breaker, but it's really important for our community. And, uh, so I would give you a shout out with them. Just hands up. So thank you very much.
I'm Samantha Garcia. And you made my colleague last, was John.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm John Park Two. Just a couple things, I just wanted to make my initial introduction. I'll let you know that the Capitol office is open. So if you, uh, want to come on, please, if you like COVID, we got an appointment. And, uh, it's worth a lot, it is quite an opening. But we are staffed, we're operational.
Other than the customers. There's no lock.
Okay, they're discussing the car lot on Solidad.
No, no, no. So the catwalks in the church. So if you're coming down, it's on the left-hand side. The church is.
So if you want information on this, it's all posted on our website. For the car lot, the site plans are there. And if you have concerns, or you can email us, we will take them.
You know, they have not, they have not said, other than saying it's an auto lot, there's no other, is it new, used? Is it like specialty auto? I don't know.
So you, there's several conversations going on.
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing is, I've lived there. I've lived there for 37 years out here. I've never heard anything going here like this in Acton. Not including all the scripts and all truck storage areas and all the stuff that's going down there. What is this? And who is applying to this? Do we know that?
Are you talking about the car lot?
The car lot, yes, what else?
Okay, well, not what else. There's several conversations.
That's what we're talking about right now. So who is this person? What's their business plan? How many lights are going to be there? What's the traffic flow? What's, all, all of the things that you talked about, Dollar General, pale in comparison to this coming in, because we all know what that, that particular area does as far as car wrecks, stop signs, everything. That is not a commercial area. I know it's zoned that way, am I correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So what are we doing about that?
Well, that's the same communication, that's why we're gathering feedback on what, what you guys want to know. We, we don't know. That's what, well, that's what I'm saying. So in case you write in, tell us what you want to know, we will package this all up. We've asked these questions, and Brendan Roerich was always gotten. We got plans.
So we go to website, and I'm just going to say, we want to know everything about this business, of what they're doing and how they're doing it.
Well, we specifically explicitly asked them about traffic, traffic patterns. How about, you know.
Light?
Delivery, large trucks pulling onto and off of Solidad and onto and off of Beliso, at a place where cars go 70 miles an hour.
No, no, Depp, I, I'm, how many of us are business people? Okay, would you put a car lot there? That no traffic goes by? That no, like, what is?
Yes. We've asked, it does, like I said, my, my hat off for me, it seems very odd that, that you have a 9,000 square foot building that's supposed to house cars. Like, I mean, listen, Lamborghinis, I don't know what's going to be selling out there in small quantities that's going to.
And we all know what light pollution does at a car lot. And I thought we had an ordinance here, do we not?
We do, there is an ordinance here, and they will have to follow that.
Okay, so they have to follow ordinance. And how, in that commercial area, and that's commercial, there is residential right up against it.
Right next to it.
Okay, and how, what's their operating area? Do we have any, anything in this town? I know, I've lived here a long time. This is the first meeting I've come to, because this thing is, that whole area is getting wiped out, folks. It's moving this way. Think Dollar General is, that's Dollar General? It's coming this way. And it's coming down from Long Island. So we need to look in that area and watch the territory, that's all I'm saying. How, how are we going to get the information before this thing goes?
So we, we did ask for the county to send us those plans, and they did provide them. They are in, uh, on our website. So we're not omniscient. That's why we're asking for people to tell us what to ask. We can think we know a lot of things, but we don't know everything. I live a lifetime. So if you have specific concerns, light pollution, for example, is their roof going to be white? Because that can be very blindingly bright to people who have to look at it with the sunshine. Things along those lines, concerns you have, so we can push them on to county and then, you know, have our staff to make sure that they're.
So what would be the biggest things?
That's what we're asking.
Well, we've asked for.
We know what we think, but we want.
What's the biggest things that I can put in here? Traffic.
Light, lighting, curts.
And safety.
Safety.
Solidad is used by a lot of bikers, not only local bicyclists, but groups coming out of Santa Clarita. They already pass us at 70 miles an hour, and you almost feel like they brush by you.
Signing on the road used to be about 35, 40 miles an hour. Now it's 66.
Now you're going to have. Now you're going to have more traffic. It's just going to make it, the bicyclists, the horse riders, people who walk their dogs along, so they're all invaded.
We have not asked them to look at the light.
All right. So I'll put those big items, because little items, they are getting blocked. The big items are the ones that.
And, well, you know, if all items get pushed, I want to be very clear. You're sending this information to us, we're not repackaging it and pushing it on. We are taking it, and, because we don't want to be gatekeepers to information, so.
We said, package it up, we just collected, he said, we collected.
But then we put a big old letter on top.
Saying, here's, here's the overall narrative. Yeah, if, if, that would be helpful, you can get stuff from this.
Someone will get back to you. See them lose weight.
Everybody's on six-door X-Actin.
Any other points on that before we go on to the next? Let me find. Uh, oh.
When do they think they want to do this?
I think you ask them as soon as possible.
As soon as possible.
Yeah, they've submitted the plan, so, I mean, it's, it's, the process is, the gun's gone off, so they've started down the road. Uh, and we've asked for information, all we've gotten out of the plans.
Oh, we're fused on the trails.
Yes.
I'm like, oh, I don't think so. Something we invited to do something like this as well?
Yeah, if we knew who they were. That's, so, so that, that is the key problem.
You know what? I, I will work on this. I will drill down, get, get the content, please.
Which may help answer some of the other questions, which is like, what is it, what is it really? I, I don't know. It just, it seems bizarre to me. If I just built a car lot, I'd have lots of rooms to park cars that I was selling. All right, uh, next thing up, possible project to eliminate flooding in downtown Acton. Uh, last week, the flood patrol district reached out to us about the same clean water program. Uh, we told them that all the projects that have been approved thus far in Santa Clarita and Hasen Canyon have captured stormwater runoff and diverted under park spaces to recharge groundwater levels. But there are better places such as project, where such projects could be conducted and which might actually mitigate the flooding. Uh, they had this discussion, whether a project could happen in Acton to mitigate the constant downtown floods.
Yeah, and, uh, the projects, the two projects they've approved so far, one is in New Hall and one is up in Hesley Canyon, that, and there are areas that don't have flooding. So, and what the projects are, is they excavate a portion of the, the area where the park is. Well, in this case, it could be even that area up there where there's nothing. And they put in large, in a train yard, basically a gigantic drywall. That, that, okay, capture the stormwater, clean it up, system equipment. And then just retrain it back into the ground, recharge it, as well as everything. And so since the, uh, flooding, uh, you know. Yes. Since, since we're close to the flooding, not all, but close to the flooding in downtown Acton, comes down Escanito, Crown Valley. It is delivered here, all the other projects they're having to build, all these facilities to gather all the water. Here it's delivered on a green button. So anyway, so that is at least an exciting thing that's happening.
Nice to get some of, uh, some of the money we're paying tax back.
We're going to need support from you on that project.
They proposed that 29 years ago, and somebody poo-pooed it, and they didn't do it. They were going to do it here before the park was. And do it just like they do in, in, uh, Bell Bowl Park. And some woman got up and said.
We, so they, they reached out, so, so we've had communication with them, because part of the problem is maybe we're paying all those, we're paying all these funds, we don't have any trees. Anything that we can utilize those funds for. So this is actually something we can get some of our tax money back. Otherwise, we're just shipping our tax money down to San Antonio, basically that. So this, this might be something that we can actually use here, and so at least we're not literally flushing.
We've asked, and they're going to look at.
No, no, no. They approached that. But we, in the past, we had, we've had conversations with them and said, hey, we want to do something so we can try to do some of this back in the community. And they kind of got, we've got to have an engineer do it. And we're like, well, I don't know if you know this, but we're not, the city, we don't have engineers on hall. Maybe somebody in the community could. It's like, okay, yeah, sure.
The finance club.
Yeah. They would suggest finance club could, uh, get together. I know.
They're retired.
Yeah, you know, to get an engineer to, to do this in their free time, right? So anyway, so this is big news, because just, they came back to us, which is great. That's, well, actually.
If possible, or if you guys got recommendations, mine is to do something to get the water into the wash. Wash is lower than our downtown.
Yep.
Don't take this lot and put a tank underneath. Keep it going where the water used to go and just get it into the wash. That's my thoughts.
I just want to real quick just say, the reason they are looking to us finally is because of Jackie. I've been to some of those meetings, and she stands up for Acton and then tells them, we're, you know, the board is entirely of Santa Clarita, and the money and the public are all Santa Clarita. And what about the, our rural areas on the outline?
Yes, if you were there with me at every meeting.
I, I just protected you.
Uh, okay, so that's a good news. Now, for CUP, we have some bachelor status, uh, did, uh, the CUP enrolled in the law department. CUP, how many years now? 15 years. Uh, so DRP will not clarify the status, mainly, uh, merely told us they would let us know when the hearing is scheduled. Uh, obviously, that's kind of unacceptable. Uh, there, we've not been able to see anything, that they've done anything to mitigate sewage being into the wash, as it were, and being treated properly. There've been, uh, so there's lots of questions we have around it. We've requested any information and.
I've not yet.
Yeah. Uh, Acton Rehab, uh, we asked the county what's going on with Acton Rehab. We saw some rumors, chatter going around that it was closing. Uh, we've been told the closure is temporary to COVID.
So that's.
That's all set. All right, the county is now implementing the sustainability plan. Yeah, this is, uh, the, the local comment, the OSW, last week regarding our concerns, with the CSO, we're moving, moving forward to eliminate space heaters and water heaters that do not use electricity, so propane and gas water heaters.
Space heaters and water heaters, they want to eliminate.
You have to have electric water.
If they are gas-fired or propane-fired, because they want to decarbonize the county. And they put this in as a high priority item. And I will point out, Supervisor Parker and Department of Public Works, both tried, were told, this Chief Sustainability Officer.
This was not happening.
CSO, to put the brakes on, we need to study this, this works in some places, but not in others. And the CSO just moved.
For those who don't know, the CSO is the Chief Sustainability Officer for LA County.
And he said, we're putting it on the list, we're moving forward. So Public Works is apparently in the middle of, in the process of writing an ordinance. They're going to start with new developments, but the way, uh, the building code is written and the way Public Works writes codes, is they, you know, they usually prohibit the, the actual use being installed.
At the next, so they say like 10 years from now, you can no longer install a propane gas.
One year.
No longer, or whatever.
Exactly.
There's a sunset for me, so let's keep it that way.
So we've reached out to.
So they want things out altogether.
Oh, yeah. Oh, very quickly.
That's interesting, because I didn't find gas, that was, they're all electric.
So, so what's fun about that too, is that we had highlighted, which was, hey, like, you know, so electric water heaters, uh, kind of a PSBS problem out here. At least we deal with like a hot shower.
They're the least reliable utility.
Yeah. And, and so now you're going to take that away too, so we're going to be on. So that we, we, can we get that? Uh, we provided comments to the CSO regarding those concerns and with the other liability and the cost of electricity in our, uh, the sustainability plan implementation efforts thus far essentially excluded all rural communities from participation. By that we mean, uh, all of the ARTC, which is all rural town councils. None of us were included in any of the communication about any of these changes. And then when we asked them about it, we got a, oops, sorry.
Oh, you didn't get our announcement? I know, it was on Twitter.
Yeah, they said, yeah. So, uh, which is, just for reference, uh, that's typically not how we receive communications from any of the government entities, you know, get, checking on Twitter. There's always usually some form of email communication, even if it's just to direct this to a website or attacking something. It's not just, you find it. Yeah. Or you find it, I mean, that's, that's basically what I said, it's like, you have to be looking for it. Well, how many of you are following the CSO for LA County? I mean, nobody.
They are now.
So, uh, so this is completely a tour, given that rural residents will endure more adverse impacts from the sustainability plan than any other county residence. The CSO has got great lengths to work with the city of LA, the city of Santa Monica, to decarbonize the county and get rid of gas, propane-fired space heaters and water heaters. However, they've shown no interest in speaking with Acton residents or any other rural residents.
And I will say, Public Works said they will soon be reaching out to us to address this. What we need to do as a community is make it very clear, at the right time, we don't need help, uh, that, that this is not the direction we can go. I mean, I could, I can do the math and say, if I plant two trees, I can more than enough account for the carbon, polluting space heaters.
enough account for the carbon and pollifying space heaters.
And the concern too is a lot of us, I think, to me, this is part of the slippery slope. So, maybe it's here at home in winter with weather and pellet scopes. Yes, and, and so, what that, that, in my opinion, if, if we get rid of a propane, which is, you know, relatively clean, uh, water heater, then I'm gonna guess that that's probably next, and it will be through the guise of looking at city living where it's a decoration, not here where it's a necessity for full winters.
Um, besides the letters, would it help if we addressed the supervisor's meetings? I know that with COVID, are they, are they meeting, or can we do a Zoom, or how does that work now?
The Board of Supervisors is meeting every two weeks now, and, and the last protest that we had, there was a voice vote, so yes, comment at the Board of Need, Board Supervisor Meeting on this issue, and ask the Sustainability Officer to work with the community on this, and to not put it as a high priority item. So I made that comment at the Board Meeting on Tuesday. Um, haven't heard yet from the CSO. We also submitted comments on their, uh, sustainability plan implementation report, which means that, I apologize, that was due until Monday. I'll push that out as soon as I can. Um, but at any rate, so, yes, uh, we've done that, and we need to really get specifically to the CSO, Public Works, and the supervisors on, to try to put something together, to make it work for our community, or if not working, we're not gonna get it to some place.
Alright, uh, new housing ordinances, torn and new housing ordinances are headed our way. Inclusionary housing ordinance, accessory cooling, uh, unit housing ordinance, buy right residential development so that increase in development densities. Uh, these housing ordinance will be posted on our website in the next couple days. Uh, they just recently came out. Uh, we want to hear feedback on that. I know that was an alphabet soup of things, but just take, the takeaway, idle takeaway is, they're looking to increase densities because we have a housing crisis. So, they're wanting to cram more people in, which is pretty contrary to what our entire country has here.
Still gonna keep it as an acre and a half, though, minimum?
Well, that's what, you know, that's what the concern is, is that they're going to start...
We had a conference call last week with regional planning, and they said that, uh, whatever the zoning code says, and what the general plan says is the minimum lot size. So theoretically, we're not supposed to have more dense areas than one house per acre, except for in just a very limited space down here where we have more dense homes. However, because of recent changes at the state level, and also I think somewhere in the county code, they're taking things like local home parks doesn't apply. So, they're doing things like density bonuses for local home parks and for townhouses, and they're, they're allowing townhouses like on lots down there, subject to unconditional use permit, which means if we would have, be able to say something about it, it won't be, let's not put it in hysteria, it'll be discretionary.
Hey, Jackie could tell though, we're prepping social distancing, we don't need that.
And like, you send that in, I'll pack it to you.
A lot of the concern too is, is that the state has been getting local control on zoning for houses. So, it's, some of this is the county trying to find ways to still maintain stuff, you know, control on it, when the state says, nope, we need to build, 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 build. So, there's, there's a balance, and I think our, obviously, our way is trying to throw behind keeping the density as it is.
And I must say this, regional planning really has, I think, done a lot to help us preserve low density development. We had a long conversation with them last, was the last meeting, and they changed sections that were problematic for us that, that were really important. So, I, I, regional planning is more on our side than you would think on, in terms of low density development.
And I realize that they, the state wants low density. We have a water problem.
No, no, they want high density.
I realize that. They want high density.
Yeah.
We have a water problem in this state, especially in Southern California. Uh, how is the state gonna mitigate that?
They, they don't worry about it. That's the problem. Yeah. They, they just, they just reduce your water to supply everybody else, right? So, everybody gets...
I suggest, let me suggest, actually, we'll put this on the website. The, the county came out with a draft climate action plan that talks about, and what they want is, their, their objective in the draft plan was that you build a house, you don't get water, you have to survive on your own rainwater. And, and when you actually, when you actually do the math, that, no, that's, this was our comment, we submitted it, it was published in all, published out to all the papers.
Oh, put a link on that on your website.
There's not enough water to maintain even the minimal sanitary situation.
Those guys are watching.
You can put that link on the website.
So, you know, let, let me finish, so, please, I, I think the draft, the draft climate action plan is on the website. If it isn't, it will soon. Our comments were pushed out, but please, if you see something on that, comment them, because they have, they've wrapped everything up in this climate action plan. Water, electricity, decarbonization, everything.
How do you know high density? What are the odds of getting this trailer parked? How can we go about doing that, and who do we talk to?
We have been very active, frankly. Well, you have been very active. You put that meeting together, which was illuminating. We have pointed out that they do not have a license from the state. We have pointed out that they have no licensed septic system whatsoever. We have pointed out that they have no conditional use permit. That there's nothing that, that...
They just wanted a trailer rest.
Oh, my goodness. Could you, could you please email that to us? Because if... So, we're doing what we can, the county has told us, well, we can't leave them out because we'd have to find homes for all of them. That's what we were told, and we've asked, where's that in the regulations?
Yeah.
And they haven't shown it to us, so...
But then we're involuntary. I mean, the apartments close down, and our vote over, and they have to re, you know, give placement to these people.
No, but those are only legally established apartments. That's not legally established.
Then where, where is the landlord in this? They probably is not responsible, they have to go. Because if it was a apartment, they would be very hard on getting that trailer. It's not even a trailer, that illegal home planning, and she has not been able to, she has...
They, they, it seems to me with the Maho Potato, which was initially, which was officially, the state, well, the county state, state never pointed the finger, and nobody's just picking it up.
But then we feel that back.
Correct. So then you got that point.
You can't hide behind that.
Yes.
Now it's this, we get to relocate.
I have this misunderstanding that I'm not bringing anymore trailers, and so there's...
They don't exist anymore.
But it, it's grandfathered in, so...
No, no, that, that's...
But you know what I'm saying?
No, I know, the grandfather had to be legitimate in the first place.
Right, but I'm just saying, there was, it was my understanding, what's standing here, not standing, and then we're not bringing anymore, and per the landlord, and there's a new trailer there in the last four days.
If you could drop us a line, and then the new trailer...
It makes a lot of responsibility. Is there still more regulations? I think it's... Well, and I think too, if we highlight that any trailer not meant to be, it's actually working back up, that it's still a problem. Has problems in the, I know, things have been crazy with COVID, obviously, we haven't been able to meet, so, some of this is like, kind of gone either. So I think this might be a good opportunity to bring it back up, that like, still a problem, where, where are we at with this?
Is it, is it Chuck Boswick that's doing this, or is it actually Catherine Barker?
No, it's her, it's pushing, yeah.
It's her, it's her, it's her own setup, so it's not that.
That's what I understand. I have not spoken with her directly about it. Okay. That's what Chuck, Chuck has told me, that she is...
And Chuck's on vacation this week, because I haven't talked to him.
He is on vacation. So, um, and, and my understanding is she has reached out to both regional planning and Public Works, and, yeah, I don't want to speak for...
Would it be helpful to contact the state as well, since they don't have a state license?
I have.
No, but our, our residents, our community can contact.
Okay, yes, I, I would, I would, I would understand, it's very helpful. We'll post, uh, on the website, I'll get the state, give me like 48 hours to go. Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, Nick. Okay, well, you should go, they just brought another trailer in last week. So, they're phasing up, they're phasing down.
They're finishing up the meeting here, the protest meeting. It looks like a lot of people have left, but most people were here about the Dollar General. There's still some people.
We're optimistic that we're looking at Congressman and Federal Railroad Administration to talk to you about that. Uh, in the project to ensure the quiet zones are operational before the spill changes. Quiet zones, for example, wasn't here the last meeting, uh, we can get quiet zones, but it requires double-protected crossings, so that means they're both, you have four arms, basically, for each side, there's two and two, which prevents anybody from crossing that, and then they won't have to blow the horns through unless they have an emergency. So, if they double the trips, at least you're not getting a four times the amount of horsepower. Uh, so we're hopeful to work with Congressman on that, because he asked, he's done through the FRA. Uh, High Speed Rail was proposing a new route through Acton. Uh, so despite popular belief that the High Speed Rail is dead, and it's not quite dead yet, uh, we reached out to the CH, H, Chizra, about the new route, and asked for particulars, no response was provided, which is concerning. Uh, as soon as we have more concrete information, the most, uh, the community must be allowed to express some of the issues.
The new route is supposedly completely underground in Acton, but it's a hatchet match, a cut cover, they're gonna dig, dig a hundred-foot hole in a tunnel, two different directions towards Palme de Oise, August 11th. So at least it's all underground, and it'll be deeper, much deeper than what they're proposing now, which is gonna skim along to like 50 feet right there on the Crown Mountains. Yeah, so...
They know it's kind of a fault zone, right?
Who knows what they're gonna... But as soon as we get, we, we haven't, they haven't given us a route, and this EIR is supposed to be out in November, so it's very concerning. So as soon as we get a route, we will post it on the website.
Well, we need to clarify that, Jackie, because it was posted on Nextdoor that the draft EIR was already out for, uh, Palme de Oise, and it is not.
No, it's out for Burbank to LA, and a long time ago, it was out for Barra, Breakersville to Palme de Oise.
Right, so they don't have ours yet. And someone posted that on Nextdoor, so it's correct.
Coming out like Vincent Hill, I did see that.
Oh, there, that's a route. But they're going, they're gonna fly right through Forestville. I don't know how those people...
But we do not have the draft EIR for our area. So if somebody wants to correct that on Nextdoor, that would be nice.
I, you know, I don't know who posted it, but I did see it.
I do. But I'm not gonna argue with that person. I've tried.
Anyway, so, as soon as we have the information on that, we're gonna let everybody know, so we can be heard on, on what to think of that. Um, the county is considering the Active Water Company CFP, we can play and request any continuance on the July 8th hearing until August, uh, which is great, because that is, uh, excavation work observed was struggling, I assume, there was a report that they were doing some excavation work. We should pull that back up. Uh, the CFP they applied for originally was for the Active Water Company, uh, to deliver water, uh, but then at the last minute, had the, uh, the hearing, the product that they were going to sell water to District 37, had a thousand acres a year, a year, which is a significant amount of water. And it wasn't clear whether that was going to be, uh, aside from the deliveries, or in addition to, if it was in addition to, what's the strength that we put on the, uh, water table for people with wells in surrounding areas? A lot of questions, or answers. So, uh, they have moved that on, and last week, there was some, uh, work being observed, there was excavation around, uh, the well area, and, uh, DRP says they were testing, they're moving, whether that's what they did.
No, they're digging a, they're digging a line.
Yeah.
They got a line that comes, it looked like they had, they were digging a well first, and now they've got to do that, that, um, pasture that they have, they have, they've been digging up like they're gonna put in pipes.
Like a trench?
Yeah, they got a trench one way, and then another trench coming another way.
Well, they said, but the regional planning said was that, that they, they're just, when they test their well, they have to have a place for the water to go.
No, they've never done that before.
I know, I know.
So, yeah, so, that's about, that's what we've heard, so that's kind of what we're...
We drive by it, so I see the trench, I saw them digging it up.
If anybody ever sees a pipe, just blast it to the town council really fast, because that's a problem. Because we reported to CFP from the beginning, we fought hard when the county was gonna make them do hydrology, so you go through Seacoal, we showed Seacoal doesn't apply, all these things, we knocked aside all of those impediments, and we were, I was on the phone, I was on the utilities chair, to support the CFP, first lending water, we supported, then Active Water came up, I was gonna give the same spiel for Active Water, because Commissioner Rudy was asking the other questions. And then, um, all of a sudden, this, this, all of this stuff happened. We wanted to do a thousand eight feet here, and six trucks, uh, seven thousand gallon trucks, four, four thousand gallon, it's huge.
So, it's just concerning, we, we realize that the, uh, water haulers are critical piece of infrastructure to our community.
They've always supported that.
And, uh, so, you know, it's not that we don't support that, it's, we need to have clarity about what, it, it's different than what we were presenting. Uh, I mean, they came to the town council meeting, and, uh, the, the, yeah, yeah, Amber Kane, Amber Kane talked about, yeah, so...
The emissions thing.
Yep, the emissions.
Oh, trucks.
Oh.
Yeah, not, not, not directly, but...
Oh, the car, the car, did it for...
Correct, but we, but it was talking, we talked about this.
Have we supported them on that?
Yeah, so, you know, it just never come up, that there was an additional piece of it, so, yeah. Um, and that's all I got, so...
I got one announcement about the High Speed Rail.
Yes.
It was also posted on Nextdoor a few days ago, that the High Speed Rail Authority was up Aliso Canyon taking pictures, uh, and someone posted it on Nextdoor. When I tried to get the information from the lady that posted it, she would not respond to me. I said, the High Speed Rail Authority has assured us that they will not come to Acton without notifying our town council. Well, she insisted that it was High Speed Rail Authority that she specifically asked them. So, as far as I know, there wasn't any High Speed Rail Authority people in town, but if anybody sees them, and there's something identified on their truck, please call one of us, so that we can go and check it out. I've been doing this for nine years, Jackie and I, and we would really like to...
Twelve.
Well, you've been doing it twelve, I've been doing it nine, so, it's...
So the person that posted that on Nextdoor never got back to you?
No.
Oh.
Just, when I asked the question, did you know for sure if it was High Speed Rail Authority, did you get a business card, did you see on the vehicle? What, what made she refuse to respond?
Oh, interesting.
You mean we're on Aliso? Nope, I, that's what I was trying to find out, in more, more detail. She said something about them taking pictures of 50-year-old residents, there was only one, or two on Aliso Canyon, that I'm aware of, so I had no idea. So those of you that live on Aliso or Alfa Way, if you see anything, please let us know.
And is there anything we don't know about?
Did you see the LA Times where they had the, uh, story where the Democratic legislators in Sacramento, uh, voted overwhelmingly to have High Speed Rail stop building in, uh, central California, because some of them wanted to put the rail from Burbank, uh, that link from Burbank to San Francisco, because that's where they get the, the ridership to pay for itself, and the High Speed Rail, according to the article, stated that they are gonna hold off, take a second look, and review it, because they don't want to fight. So many Democrats have signed on for the first time to stand up to the High Speed Rail.
Why do they said to stop it, and they're, is it here?
They're gonna stop building in the center, because they wanted to...
But where are they going to keep, start building?
They, they wanna look at, uh, concentrate, re-concentrate on from Burbank up there, because that's where they're gonna get the ridership. Like they said, if, right now, it doesn't look like it's gonna pay for itself, it's going from a small, mid-central California town to another small, mid-central California town.
Well, I, I'll tell you this, this is me reading the tea leaves. If there's one section that's going to be built, it's a section through Acton, because they want to connect to Desert Express, out to Vegas, and...
I thought they were gonna build that from, they just said they signed a contract to build it from Rancho...
Seven Four. Or Seven Four, just came up last week. And it is by this guy named Haller Sterns, Senator Sterns from someplace, not here. Wants to prohibit all development in all very high fire hazard areas, and all areas that are under state responsibility areas, which is all a huge chunk of Santa Clarita.